Review the meeting minutes from June 16th, 2020, find them to be in order, move their adoption.
Second, Canali.
Thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue. It has been moved by Vice Chairman Colbert and seconded by Councilman Canali. Madam Comptroller, will you please conduct the roll call vote for the minutes of the June 16th, 2020 meeting?
Councilmember Canali?
Yes.
Carlisle.
Hi.
Vice Chairman Colbert?
Yes.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan? Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. That motion passes with my favorite gavel. Thank you. Welcome to the July 7th, 2020 regular meeting of the Memphis City Council, which is being conducted electronically pursuant to the notice due to the COVID-19 emergency. Without objection, the notice of the meeting will be included in the minutes of this meeting. A notice of meeting was placed on the city council's webpage regarding how the public may electronically access the meeting and/or a recording of the meeting, and how to provide written comments concerning any agenda item or any other matter prior to this meeting. Public comments were to be submitted to the Memphis City Council 24 hours prior to today's meeting. Vice Chairman Colbert will read those comments at the appropriate time. He will only read those comments that included the requisite information, which was the person's name and address. Incomplete comments or those received late will be sent to the council records and placed in the file. We have one item that is being held this afternoon, and what did I do with it? That's item number four. Item number four. Do you have any other items to be dropped or held on the agenda? Hearing none, let's move to our consent agenda. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the items with the same night minutes being requested?
Thank you, Chairwoman Robinson. We'll start with the consent agenda. Item number three is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of South Fourth Street from 404th Street to the corner of E.H. Crump Boulevard and Fourth Street for Waleen W. Hastings. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Warren, and there is a request for same-night minutes.
Yes.
Chairwoman Robinson, would you like me to continue with all the items for same-night minutes?
Yes, please, please.
Thank you. Then we'll go over to, um, those that can be voted at once. See if we have anything else on consent for same-night minutes.
Item number two.
Item number two is a resolution requiring community meetings prior to hearings before the Land Use Control Board. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Warren. However, that is a regular resolution, and I don't want to confuse the consent items with the regular resolutions.
Okay, okay.
So let's just stop with, um, Elder R.E. Berry, number one. Let's take a vote on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Move it.
Is that Colbert? And Warren?
Victor Thomas.
It was moved by Colbert and seconded by Warren or Easter Thomas.
Easter Thomas.
Okay, thank you. I got it. Thank you. There any questions? I don't see anyone in the queue. Madam Comptroller.
Would you allow me to read it?
Yes, please. Go ahead. I'm moving too fast. Thank you for slowing me down.
Whereas when worthy circumstances arise, the Memphis City Council has seen fit to name certain public roles to honor citizens who have served this community. And whereas the late Pastor R.E. Berry was a dedicated man of faith and a visionary leader who saw a path for an improved future for his congregation nearly 50 years ago. And whereas a selfless servant of God and his spiritual community, Pastor Berry gave his time, energy, and home in furtherance of his ministry for use by the men, women, children, and families of Memphis. His spirit of altruism was big. Collected when in 1974, the founding year of Trinity All Nations Missionary Baptist Church, Pastor Berry opened his living room for use as the organization's first sanctuary, all the while vowing that the members would soon get a building of their own, which would be for the community in every sense of the word. Pastor Berry was a man of his word. Within one year's time, Trinity All Nations Missionary Baptist Church did get a building, one that was for the community, which the congregation still occupies to this present day. And it was the totality of Pastor Berry's faith, vision, and steadfast nature that not only inspired, but also provided countless benefits to Memphians of every stripe. And in this manner, the church doors were always open to any family in need of a place for a wedding funeral without charge, thereby reflecting Pastor Berry's intention that Trinity All Nations Missionary Baptist Church be a spiritual and community resource, welcoming any person seeking space to praise, celebrate, or to mourn. In Pastor Berry's faith-driven works extended outside his physical church, he routinely fed neighboring residents in need of food while also walking door-to-door, extending invitations to attend church services, oftentimes stopping to pray for those who allowed him to do so. In Pastor Berry's act of compassion continued until his passing in 1996, his legacy of benevolence continues to thrive as his church has remained a safe haven for all. Now therefore be it resolved that Norman Avenue between Boxwood Street and North Hollywood Street be declared Elder R.E. Berry Avenue in honor of his life and numerous accomplishments on behalf of the Lord. Sponsored by Michael Easter Thomas, Memphis City Councilwoman and Chairwoman Patrice Robinson.
I take mine. I'm watching it there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, uh.
Is it, is it appropriate time for me to recommend our other street name attending, or do we need to wait on that?
We need to wait on that. Okay, thank you. I don't see any councilmembers in the queue. Congratulations for the honorary, honorary, uh, street name change to Elder R.E. Berry Avenue. Councilmembers, let's prepare to vote. Madam Comptroller.
Councilmember Canali?
Yes.
Carlisle?
I got down. Who was that down?
Vice Chairman Colbert?
Yes.
What's your name?
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan? Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you.
Now Chairwoman Robinson, I'm ready to continue with our same-night minutes. On our consent agenda, that will be number three, 10, 12, and 13 for same-night minutes.
Okay.
Item number three is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of South Fourth Street from 404th North Fourth Street. I think we just did that one, didn't we?
No.
Okay. Resolution approving honorary street name change of South Fourth Street from 404th North on Fourth Street to the corner of E.H. Crump Boulevard and Fourth Street for Waleen W. Hastings. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Warren. Item number five on our consent agenda is up for first reading, ordinance rescinding referendum ordinance number 5744, amending Article 27, Section 190 of the Charter of the City of Memphis, saying being Chapter 11 of the Acts of 1879 as amended and relative to amendments thereto pursuant to the provisions of Article 11, Section 9 of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee Home Rule Amendment to allow specified personnel employed with the divisions of police and fire services to reside within 50 miles from the city of Memphis. Up for first reading ordinance number 5756 is sponsored by Councilwoman Easter Thomas. Item number six on our consent agenda is an ordinance rezoning 4195 East Shelby Drive containing plus or minus 30.016 acres in the Conservation Agriculture District. Up for first reading, this ordinance is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is Z2001, ordinance number 5733. Item number seven is an ordinance rezoning the northwest corner of East Holmes Road and Malone Road containing 40.80 acres in the Conservation Agriculture and Conservation Agriculture Floodplain District. Up for first reading, this ordinance is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is Z20-02, ordinance number 5754. Item number eight is an ordinance rezoning north of Ketchum Road, east of Imogene Street, south of Dwight Road, and west of Pendleton Street, containing plus or minus .66 acres in the residential single-family-6, R-6, and residential urban districts. Up for first reading, this ordinance is sponsored by the Office of Planning and Development. The case number is Z20-03, ordinance number 5755. Item number nine is a notation from the Land Use Control Board that the following cases were heard, and there's a recommendation made for requesting a date of public hearing for A, case number SUP19-41, um, it's 145-foot cell tower, and case number B, case number PD362, Quinsland Field Plan Development. Item number 10, which there's a request for same-night minutes, is a resolution approving the engineering plans for lakehurst drainage improvements. The contract number is CR5330. Item number 11 is a resolution approving the engineering plans for Renaissance Bank, 5575 Popla Avenue, contract number CR-5331. Item number 12, a request for same-night minutes, a resolution approving the engineering plans for aviation facilities plan development, re-recording of Phase 2, 4, and 5 UPS Oak Haven Hub. The contract number is CR-5332. Number 13, there's a request for same-night minutes, it's a resolution approving the supplement agreement number one to Community Redevelopment Agency Drainage Improvement. The contract number is CR-5327, amended. Chairwoman Robinson, that concludes our consent agenda items.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second, please?
So moved. Move it.
Thank you.
Carlisle and Easter Thomas, I have it. Thank you. And, uh, I'd like for, uh, just take a moment on number three. It was supposed to be a surprise, but it can't be anything, it can't be a surprise when it's televised. So Dr. Warren, will you please read your resolution?
Just can we get Brooke to put it on the screen for us?
Okay, thank you. Brooke?
Give us one minute, please. Lakevia, can you put that on the screen, please?
I'll start it now.
Okay. Whereas Waleen W. Hastings is one such citizen, contributions to the Memphis community are certainly worthy of recognition. And whereas since 2020, Ms. Hastings has served at the helm of the Memphis Health Center Incorporated as the Chief Executive Officer. And whereas during her tenure at the Memphis Health Center, Ms. Hastings' exemplary leadership has brought MHC to new heights of excellence. And whereas as a healthcare professional with 30-plus years of progressive clinical and administrative experience, Ms. Hastings has long used her experience to advocate for quality and affordable healthcare for the underserved and underprivileged populations. And whereas Ms. Hastings leveraged her community connections to build mutually beneficial collaborations and partnership with the Church Health Center, Christ Community Health Services, and Mahari Medical College and others. And whereas Ms. Hastings has also overseen the receipt of over $20 million in donations and grants to the Memphis Health Center to continue providing exceptional services to the greater Memphis community. And whereas Ms. Hastings, under Ms. Hastings' direction, Memphis meeting and/or exceeding center has improved the health status of the community by having quality health outcomes in many instances. And where'd she go with that? You moved it so fast, I lost my spot. Uh. And whereas under her directions, M-M Memphis Health has improved the health status of the community by meeting or exceeding quality health outcomes in many instances. And whereas with her retirement from Memphis Health Center, Ms. Hastings will be missed by all. Be it there, there, now be it therefore resolved that the Memphis City Council congra-gives congratulations to Ms. Hastings on her retirement from the Memphis Health Center Incorporated and designates Fourth Street from 400 foot north on Fourth Street to the corner of E.H. Crump Boulevard and Fourth Street in Memphis, Tennessee as Waleen W. Hastings Place. Be it further resolved that this city engineer is requested to affix suitable signs designating such public road. Congratulations, Ms. Hastings.
Yes, congratulations. Waleen Hastings. Thank you. Uh, Madam Comptroller, I don't see anyone in the queue. Will you please call and roll?
Councilmembers Canali?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Colbert?
Yes.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson? Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. Thank you. That motion passed. Thank you. Oh, Lord. Excuse me. Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Madam Comptroller, will you please call the fiscal consent agenda?
Item number 14 is a resolution accepting and appropriating grant funds in the amount of $13,868 from Hewlett-Packard Enterprise for Aruba Healthcare Connectivity Bundle during COVID-19 pandemic. All council districts are represented. This resolution is sponsored by Fire Services. There is a request for same-night minutes. Item number 15 is a resolution amending the FY 2020 operating budget by accepting and appropriating $409,467.50 from Shelby County Government for the federal FY19 Justice Assistance Grant Program on behalf of the Memphis Police Department. This represents all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services. There is a request for same-night minutes. Item number 16 is a resolution amending the FY 21 operating budget by accepting and appropriating grant funds in the amount of $78,417 from the State of Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration Office of Justice Programs. This donation will be used to purchase after-school programming supplies, professional services, and travel. All council districts are represented. This resolution is sponsored by Memphis Public Library and Information Center. There's a request for same-night minutes. Item number 17 is a resolution amending the FY 21 operating budget by accepting and appropriating grant funds in the amount of $51,900 from the Tennessee State Library and Archives for supplies, books, and materials for the Memphis Public Library and Information Center. This represents all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by Memphis Public Library and Information Center. There's a request for same-night minutes. Chairwoman Robinson, that concludes our fiscal consent agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. Can I get a motion? Thank you.
Carlisle.
Carlisle, thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue. It's been moved by Councilman Colbert, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. Madam Comptroller, will you please call and roll on the fiscal consent agenda?
Councilmembers Canali?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Colbert?
Yes.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen? Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. Thank you. That motion passes. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the MLGW fiscal consent agenda?
Item number 18 is a resolution approving an agreement between MLGW and Shelby County Government Public Works Division to bill and collect the solid waste fees in the North Haven Special Service District. Item number 19 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Thomas Galloway Corporation doing business as Technoligen for software annual maintenance and support in the amount of $77,586.21. Item number 20 is a resolution approving change number four to contract number 11851, Ariator Maintenance with RP Services, Inc., in the funded amount of $300,000. Item number 21 is a resolution awarding a 36-month purchase order to Brighter Days and Nights, Inc., for 600 boat ruggedized secondary underground cable in the amount of $1,522,702. And item number 22 is a resolution awarding a purchase order to AutoNation Ford Memphis for pickup trucks in the amount of $820,016.92. Chairwoman Robinson, that concludes our MLGW fiscal consent items.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller.
My pleasure.
I need a motion?
More moves?
Colbert, second. Okay, members, uh, I don't see anyone in the queue. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll on this item? We had Councilwoman Morgan moved it. It was seconded by Councilwoman Colbert.
Thank you, Chairwoman Robinson. Councilmembers Canali?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Colbert?
Yes.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. We're about to go into our regular agenda items, and I'm going to take them out of order. Uh, Madam Comptroller, we're going to do items number 28 through 39. We're gonna start with, oh, will you please read item number 28?
Item number 28 is a resolution requesting the approval for the sale of city-owned property in the amount of $811,000 located at 2998 Tillman Cove in Memphis, Shelby County, Tennessee, and further described as parcel ID number 04400900017. This property is in District 5, Super District 9. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development. It was held from June 16th. There is a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. Uh, Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair.
Second. I can see it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Johnson, you want to introduce this item, please?
Yes, I thought I did. It must have been on me. I'm sorry. Okay, this item was discussed in, um, committee. It received a favorable recommendation, and I so moved.
Thank you.
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The move by Councilwoman Johnson, seconded by Councilwoman Carlisle. I don't see anyone in the queue.
Uh, Councilman Jones, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to let everybody know, I've been in contact with Director Young, uh, as well as Ms. Sink regarding the concerns that I had during the committee meeting earlier today. And I just want to, uh, let everybody know that, uh, Director Young is gonna be making a modification to the resolution, and it will include, um, the following language, that if the purchaser fails to redevelop this property within 24 months, the property will revert back to the city of Memphis with no recourse by purchaser. And if the purchaser receives a bona fide written offer from a third party to buy or trade the property prior to redeveloping the property, purchaser will first offer the property back to the city of Memphis for the lesser amount of a bona fide offer or the price purchaser paid to the city of Memphis. And so, colleagues, this was to address the concern that I had that, uh, that developers would not be speculating with land that they acquire from the city of Memphis to their benefit and not to the benefit of the taxpayers of the city of Memphis. So, uh, I don't have any objection, and they've addressed the concerns that I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Jones. I, uh, skipped over Councilwoman Rhonda Logan. Councilwoman Logan?
Yes, ma'am.
You have a note here. You voted yes. Was that for the last item?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure they recorded it. They got it.
Okay. Madam Comptroller, did you get Councilwoman Logan on the last vote?
Our last vote was the fiscal consent agenda, and yes.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and I have, uh, Director Paul Young?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I just wanted to, uh, follow up on, uh, Councilman Jones' comments. We have, uh, spoken with the developer, and they are in agreement. There's one minor change, uh, to the language that he read, and, uh, we're sending that over now. Uh, we just added the words to begin to redevelop the property within 24 months because we wanted to be clear that we didn't necessarily mean that the property had to, the construction had to be completed. Um, and so we are sending that final language over right now, and it will be reflected in both the, um, resolution as well as the purchase-sale agreement.
Okay. Any other questions? I see one. Uh, Councilman Carlisle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Councilman Jones, for focusing on that. Uh, I'm sorry, I missed it in the document. Uh, because that was one of the biggest things. missed it in the document, because that was one of the biggest things that I was concerned about as well. Now that this project is moving forward, I would be really excited to schedule the developers to come in and give us an update at a period of time that is reasonable. I'm not sure where they are in the project, but if, at some point, when they get renderings and/or, you know, their design documents, I'm sure the body would love to see what they were up to.
If I might just respond, I'm confident that they will be ready for that because some, many of those documents, they have already prepared, and so, we will certainly get that scheduled.
Thank you. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll on item number twenty-eight?
Council members, Canaly.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Kovet.
Yes.
Easter Thomas.
Yes.
Ford.
Aye.
Johnson.
Yes.
Jones.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Smiley.
Yes.
Waringen.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson.
Maybe need a minute, Chair.
Vice Chairman Kovet, I don't have a response from Chairwoman Robinson.
When she comes back, of course, she could have the ch-
We just concluded item number twenty-eight, and we're doing the same-night-minute item.
All right, colleagues, that item passes. Call the next same-night-minute. Is that thirty-two, I believe?
That's correct, sir. We're going to item number thirty-
Now, let's go with that one.
We're going to item number thirty-two on our add-on. There's a request for same-night minutes. Item number thirty-two is a resolution allocating one million dollars FY twenty-twenty-one CARES Act funding for eviction settlement fund in response to COVID- nineteen pandemic. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development.
Thank you very much, Madam Comptroller. Councilman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The committee met, approved this item, and I so moved.
Thank you. May I go ahead and get a second, please?
Second, Canaly.
It's been properly moved by Jones, seconded by Canaly. I don't see any members in the queue. Nobody signaling to be recognized, so I assume you're ready to vote on item thirty-two. Roll call, but, roll call, please.
Councilmember Canaly.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Kovet.
Yes.
Easter Thomas.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Jones.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Smiley.
Aye.
Waringen.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, Vice Chair, for taking over. I don't know what happened to my sound. It just went out. Item number, Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number thirty-three?
Item number thirty-three is a resolution amending FY twenty-twenty-one capital improvement budget by seven million five hundred thousand dollars for information technology projects funding through general obligation bond debt as part of the capital improvement plan. This resolution is sponsored by Information Technology and Finance Division. There's a request for same-night minutes.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee met, approved this item, and I so moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. That item has been properly moved and seconded. I don't see anyone in the queue for item number thirty-three. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers, Canaly.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Kovet. Easter Thomas.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Jones.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Smiley.
Aye.
Waringen.
Aye.
Warren.
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Kovet, I did see your yes. Chairwoman Robinson.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. Item number thirty-four, Madam Comptroller?
Item number thirty-four is a resolution allocating and appropriating three-hundred-nineteen-thousand-five-hundred-fifty dollars and twenty cents in geo bonds for CIP project number PW two-zero-three-zero-zero. Curb ramp cover line, ADA curb ramp installations at various locations. This represents all council districts. The resolution is sponsored by the Public Works Division. There's a request for same-night minutes.
Councilman Smiley? Is Councilman Smiley? I need a motion, please?
So moved.
So Madam Chairman, the committee met, recommends approval, and I so moved.
Okay, and who seconded?
Smiley.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I'm looking. I don't see anybody in the queue. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll on item number thirty-four?
Councilmembers, Canaly.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kovet. Thank you, Vice Chairman Kovet. Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Jones.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Smiley.
Aye.
Waringen.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number thirty-five?
Item number thirty-five is a resolution allocating and appropriating five hundred thousand dollars in general obligation funds for PW twenty-twenty capital, that'll be Public Works twenty-twenty capital improvement project, for project number PW two-zero-two-zero-one to replace various sidewalks throughout the city. This affects all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by the Public Works Division, and there is a request for same-night minutes.
Councilman Kovet?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so moved.
I need a second.
Johnson, seconded.
Thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers, Canaly.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kovet.
Yes.
Easter Thomas? Ford.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Jones.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Smiley.
Aye.
Waringen.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
May I revisit the vote for Councilmember Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. And Vice Chairman Kovet, I did get your vote, and Chairwoman Robinson, your vote, please.
Aye.
Thank you. That concludes item number thirty-five.
Thank you. That motion passes. Thank you. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number thirty-six?
Item number thirty-six is a resolution establishing CIP projects number GS two-one-one-zero-five and GS two-one-zero-zero. Major modification, carpentry by transferring FY twenty-twenty-one allocation and appropriating funds of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in geo bonds. This is to replace the gym floors at Orange Mounds and Whitehaven Community Centers to weatherize or replace windows and repair the foundation at Ruth Tate Senior Center. The districts involved are three, four, six, and Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by General Services, and there is a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you. Councilman Kovet?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so moved.
Second.
That Carlisle?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. It's been properly moved by Kovet, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. No one's in the queue. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Canaly.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kovet. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Jones.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Smiley.
Aye.
Waringen.
Aye.
Warren. Chairwoman Robinson.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number thirty-seven?
Item number thirty-seven is a resolution appropriating FY twenty-twenty-one ten million dollars for CIP project number GS zero-one-zero-three-two in construction funds, geo bonds for municipal complex, City of Memphis Phase Two, at the former Walter Simmons location. The districts are four and Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by the General Services Division, and there is a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you, Councilman Canaly. No, Kovet, I'm sorry, Councilman Kovet.
Well, thank you for putting me in the same league with the good-looking kid. I mean, cool. Okay, I thought it was funny. Thank you, Madam Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so moved.
Second, Canaly.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. I don't have anyone in the queue. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers, Canaly.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kovet.
Yes.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Johnson. Jones.
Yes.
Logan.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Smiley.
Aye.
Waringen.
Aye.
Warren. Chairwoman Robinson.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number thirty-eight?
Item number thirty-eight is a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis in our community and committing to enacting policies that unequivocally defend minorities and aim to eradicate the effects of systemic racism affecting Black people and other minorities. This resolution is sponsored by Chairwoman Robinson, Councilwoman Easter Thomas, Councilwoman Waringen, Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman Logan, Councilman Jones, Councilman Smiley, Councilman Warren, Councilman Kovet, Councilman Canaly, and Councilman Carlisle. There's a request for same-night minutes.
Councilman Kovet? Vice Chairman Kovet? We met in the committee.
I apologize, it wasn't working. Yes, ma'am, the committee met, executive, it met, it recommends approval, and I so moved. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. I don't see anyone in the queue, except I see Dr. Jeff Warren said that he was left out, so please add him as a co-sponsor of this resolution. And Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Canaly.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Kovet. Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Waringen?
Good night.
Waringen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson.
Aye. That motion passes. And Madam Comptroller, let me make sure. I have some notes here that on the item number thirty-seven, Councilman Warren voted yes. He said that he couldn't get on to say anything, and on this vote, Councilwoman Easter Thomas voted yes.
Thank you, Chairwoman Robinson.
Okay, you're quite welcome, and thank you, Madam Comptroller. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number thirty-nine?
Item number thirty-nine is a resolution establishing a committee to review progress of contact tracing by the Health Department. This resolution is sponsored by Chairwoman Robinson, and there is a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you. Councilman Kovet?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so moved. Second.
Thank you. Madam Comptroller, that item was moved and seconded. Would you please call the roll? I don't see anybody in the queue. Will you please call the roll on item number thirty-nine?
Councilmember Canaly.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kovet.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chairman. Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Waringen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. We should have completed all of our same-night minutes.
Chairwoman Robinson, I have item number two about the community meetings.
Okay.
That will be our last one.
Okay, thank you. Please read item number two.
Item number two is a resolution requiring community meetings prior to hearings before the Land Use Control Board. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Johnson and Councilman Warren. There's a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you, Councilman Kovet.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so moved.
Need a second? Okay, Carlisle. Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Madam Comptroller, it was moved by Councilman Kovet, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. I don't see anyone in the queue. Will you please call the roll on item number two?
Thank you. Councilmembers, Canaly.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Colvet?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that took care of all of our add-ons, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, we're back to our regular agenda items. Will you please call item number twenty-three?
Item number twenty-three is a resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed thirty-one million dollars aggregate principal amount of the City of Memphis, Tennessee, General Improvement Bond, Series Twenty-Two-Zeta-A, for the purpose of financing the cost of public works projects. This resolution is sponsored by the Finance Division. It was held from June sixteenth.
Councilman Colvet, Vice Chairman Colvet?
Thank you. Committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Canaly?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Colvet?
Yes.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number twenty-four?
Item number twenty-four is an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed thirty-one million dollars of general obligation bonds for the City of Memphis, Tennessee, for the purpose of financing the cost of public works projects in the city. This resolution is sponsored by the Finance Division, and it was held from June sixteenth.
Thank you. Councilman Colvet?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Who's the second?
Canaly.
Who?
Canaly.
No.
Canaly, thank you. Madam Comptroller? This item has been moved and seconded. Please forgive me. Please call a roll on this item.
I'll try. Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Colvet? Thank you. Thank you. Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. We're getting tired now. Uh, item, Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number twenty-six?
Twenty-six. Okay. Would you like me to skip twenty-six, Chairwoman Robinson?
Skip twenty-six?
I mean, twenty-five. Would you like me to do twenty-five before I do twenty-six?
Please do. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No problem. Item number twenty-five is a resolution requesting the approval of the sale of city-owned surplus parcels in the amount of five thousand dollars acquired by the City of Memphis, located at zero Willow View Avenue, Memphis Shelby County, Tennessee, three-eight-one-one-one, and further described as parcel number zero-five-eight-one-zero-two-zero-zero-one-nine. This represents City Council District Four and Super District Nine. The request, the resolution is sponsored by General Services.
Councilman Smiley?
Yes, Madam Chairman. The Committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Madam Comptroller, will you please, uh, wait, wait, just a minute. I see someone. Okay, I don't see anyone in the queue. Will you please call a roll on item number twenty-five?
Councilmembers Canaly?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Colvet?
Yes.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford? Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you so much. Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number twenty-six?
Item number twenty-six is a resolution requesting the approval of the sale of city-owned surplus parcel in the amount of five hundred dollars acquired by the City of Memphis, located at East Utah Avenue, Memphis Shelby County, Tennessee, three-eight-one-zero-six, and further described as parcel number zero-two-four-zero-five-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero-two-eight. City Council districts represented are six and Super District eight. This resolution is sponsored by General Services.
Councilman Smiley?
Yes, Madam Chairman. The Committee met, recommend approval, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. No one is in the queue. Madam Comptroller, please call the roll on item number twenty-six.
Councilmembers Canaly?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Colvet?
Yes.
Easter Thomas?
Listen, she wants to, yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
What is that?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
May I revisit the votes for Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. Hi, Madam Comptroller, will you please call item number twenty-seven?
Item number twenty-seven is a resolution requesting the approval of the sale of city-owned bacon parcels in the amount of one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars, located at fifteen-thirty-four Robin Hood Lane, parcel number zero-five-zero-eight-zero-eight-six-zero-zero-four-seven, Memphis Shelby County, Tennessee, three-eight-one-one-one. This resolution is sponsored by General Services.
Councilman Smiley?
Yes, Madam Chairman. The Committee may recommend approval, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Comptroller, we have, it has been properly moved and seconded. Please call the roll on item number twenty-seven.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Yes.
Colvet?
Yes.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. Item number twenty-seven passes. Thank you. Madam Comptroller, we've already done item number twenty-eight. Will you please read item number twenty-nine?
Item number twenty-nine is a resolution allocating and appropriating four million, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in available tourism development zone surplus revenues for infrastructure improvement projects in the Pinch District. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development, and it was held from June sixteenth.
Councilman Colvet?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second, Canaly.
Thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue. Madam Comptroller, please call the roll on item number twenty-nine.
Councilmembers Canaly?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Yes.
Colvet? Thank you. Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. Madam Comptroller, please call item number thirty?
Item number thirty is a resolution allocating and appropriating five million dollars for Pinch District infrastructure improvements. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development. It was held from June sixteenth.
Councilman Colvet?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Who said second?
Uh, Carlisle, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue. Madam Comptroller, we, it was properly moved by Colvet, seconded by Carlisle. Will you please call the roll on item number thirty?
Councilmembers called, uh, Canaly?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Colvet?
Yes.
Thank you. Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. Madam Comptroller? Will you please call item number thirty-one?
Item number thirty-one is a resolution allocating and appropriating twenty-five million dollars for the remodel of a Renaissance Convention Center and five million dollars for adjacent street scape improvements. The project number is GS-one-seven-one-zero-two. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development, and it was held from June sixteenth.
Thank you. Council, Vice Chairman, Colvet? Colvet?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. The Committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. This item has been moved by Councilman Colvet and seconded by Councilman Warren. I don't see anyone in the queue. Madam Comptroller, please call the roll on item number thirty-one.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Colvet?
Yes.
Thank you. Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. That motion's carried. Madam Comptroller, have I missed any items?
I think we are ready for our same-night minutes.
All right. Councilman Colvet, do you have the same-night minutes?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Uh, I do have a question, though. Uh, staff and I are talking. Were items ten and twelve, which I believe were, and thirteen, ten, twelve, and thirteen, which were on the consent agenda? Those weren't same-night minutes, were they? Items ten, twelve, thirteen?
No, they were not same-night minutes.
Our note, Councilman Colvet, yes, they should have been listed as such on the regular agenda. That was an oversight. It was a request that was, um, asked for by the Engineering Division.
Okay. Fair enough. Uh, I've double-checked, no, that's double-check. Uh, colleagues, items one, two, three, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, twenty-eight, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine, I find them to be in order. Remove their adoption.
Thank you. And who's the second?
Canaly.
Canaly, thank you. I don't see any questions. Madam Comptroller, will you please call the roll on same-night minutes?
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Colvet?
Yes.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Smiley?
Aye.
Swearengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairwoman Robinson?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. Vice Chairman Colvet, do we have any cards?
Hey, before you read the-
We have two. Uh, okay.
Excuse me, Councilman Ford?
Yep. Can I speak before we go through that?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you very much. Look, all the council members, I know we had talked about the five million dollars for the school system. I need, there's a press release that just came out. Uh, Governor Lee, he just announced eighty-one million dollars in, uh, coronavirus relief, which is exactly all for the schools, for laptops, everything that we need. I'd like for y'all to go online where everybody will be able to get that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, 'cause that may help us down the road.
Yes, sir.
But this just come out a few minutes ago, and I have it, uh, yeah, but I think it would cover quite a few things, especially with the school system.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Vice Chairman Colvet?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, colleagues, we have two letters, uh, to us. The first one is from Sarah Ledbetter of fourteen forty-one Peabody Avenue, three-eight-one-oh-four, says, "Good afternoon, Chairwoman Robinson. My name is Sarah Ledbetter. Uh, the agenda is the city's proposed budget. I am a native Memphian, raised in prosperity and unsheltered from the despicable lack of equality in housing conditions, opportunity, safety, and all of the measures for our constitutional rights to the pursuit of happiness. I cherish the city and mourn its legacy of anti-black policies. At this time, for our mayor to propose adding more funds to policing is not only tone deaf, it is indicative of profound insensitivity and a lack of foresight. We, the people, are moving forward from slavery, from Jim Crow, from Third World condition- We, the people, are moving forward from slavery, from Jim Crow, from third-world conditions for our black brothers and sisters. I urge you right now, as mayor of a majority-black city, to take stand and allocate our funds where our heart is. Education, public transportation, mental health services for the poor, to name a few, have been defunded for too long now. We want to see change, and we are watching you with love, fierce urgency, and hope. How will you spend or earn our trust at this time? Will you do the right thing and defund the police and put our tax dollars where they were, will leverage white privilege for the good of all Memphians? Or will we languish in the backwaters of a shameful past and solidarity with Dr. King's legacy? Sarah Ledbetter." Our second comment comes from Reverend Dr. Rosalyn Regina Nichols of fifty-one twenty-five Pilgrim Road, Memphis, three-eight-one-one-six. The agenda item is MICA and addressing MPD referendum. "Good afternoon. In MICA's Justice and Equity Center, we demand that public officials and local law enforcement leaders hire Shelby County residents to serve in law enforcement within their communities. We want public safety officers who served and live as residents in our community. We believe residency matters. We believe that substantial systemic systemic transformation to our existing law enforcement practices is the greater need and concern related to community safety. Substantial transformation would come in the form of funding for agencies and professional services to appropriately respond to the mental health crisis, and advocacy and intervention for at-risk youth, transitional, low-income housing to address homelessness and domestic violence. How can the nine-point-eight million from the Justice Department be appropriated to fund these types of initiatives? Of the total number of nine-one-one calls, how many can be redirected to service providers and professionals other than MPD? Our fellow residences in these areas, residents in these areas of need, will be best served by a radical, courageous, transformational response that ultimately creates the safety we desire for all. MICA, thanks you for listening to the voices of your constituents as you vote to remove the referendum from the November ballot. More officers, regardless of their residency, will not be the solution to the very real crisis we face. In this pivotal moment, we need your leadership and action as we work together to create a new model that will yield a new lived experience throughout our great city. History will record how we managed this moment for the generations that follow us. We trust you to speak and stand with the people who want systemic change and not the status quo. Thank you for your service faithfully, Rosalyn Nichols, pastor." Madam Chairman, that concludes our public comments.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Colvet. We have been asked.
I move to recess.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I need a second, please.
Second.
Okay, this meeting will now be recessed until Tuesday, and we'll send you the time on next week. Thank you.
Nice.
This meeting is now adjourned.